It is six o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. The Christian County Library Board of Trustees Open Session Meeting for Tuesday, June the 20th. And I'm going to start off with the consent agenda. Are there any items that we need to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually?
You know what? I would like to discuss the report of the Executive Director.
Okay, so we'll pull the report of the Executive Director. Anything else from the consent agenda? All right, so what's left is the minutes from Tuesday, May 23rd meeting, the minutes from Thursday, June 15th special closed meeting, and then the rest of the financial reports. As there are no objections to these, they are adopted. And the report of the Executive Director. Paula, is there something specifically you wanted to touch on or?
Well, yes, I can make notes. Okay. I want to say congratulations to the NIXA Library Shelver Emily Peterson, who graduated with her bachelor's degree from Missouri State University last night. That's very good. The IT Manager Heath Emerson has almost completed the implementation of technology, of the Technology Ladder Grant for the NIXA Community Grant by putting in a new TV in the community room, new staff computers at NIXA Service Desk and Youth Services, new staff computers for interlibrary loans and Mobius staff, and new public computers. Now, that is really a great thing, you know, because we all, we needed those and having a grant for that is terrific. And then the programs, I think, were very interesting and there was good attendance at all of those. I missed the crumbling Ozark History one, which I think would have been very entertaining. And then the Ozark Annual Ed Drop saw a crowd of 61 people. Let me see. And Charlie Evans, the Adult Services Librarian, was excited to use the new Fender Passport venue sound system, which was funded by the foundation for the first time. She said it worked perfectly as opposed to previous years where I cut in and out. The seed library, which I don't know if every library system has a seed library, but ours is very good. And it was another huge success with nearly 5,000 packets of seeds checked out. Walmart Store number 379 in Ozark provided a grant to purchase those seeds this year. And then there's several patron praises. And the one I wanted to point out was a clever community branch patron recently using the fax machine told staff how much she appreciated the library offering that service. And I think that's probably an example of a service that probably is not used very often, but yet when a person needs it, it's great that the public library has it. And that's it.
Thank you, Paula.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions from the board in regards to the Executive Director's report?
Nope.
All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the report of the Executive Director.
Motion.
Motion, House of Representatives. Second. All right, do I hear any other discussion on this motion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Bishop?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Trustee Sosinski?
Aye.
Trustee Tuckness?
Aye.
All right, the report of the Executive Director is adopted. I'm going to change up the agenda a little bit for tonight's meeting. Specifically, I'm going to move the public comments from the end of the meeting up to this portion of the meeting, considering the topic, obviously, that most of everybody wants to talk about. I want to discuss that in the beginning of the meeting. A couple of things in regards to public comments. As per the board's updated public comment policy, as a general rule, the board will not respond to public comments at the time they are made. The board may ask clarified questions, comment, or take actions at their discretion. Questions for staff about library operations should be made during the normal business hours. And then the, as per the policy, the public comment section is limited to 30 minutes of the meeting. So we will keep track of that. But as such, because we do have so many speakers, Tori is going to put a three-minute timer up on the board. You'll hear an alarm going off. And because I want to make sure we get to everybody that we can within that 30 minutes, I will stop you at three minutes. So please watch that as you're speaking. And when the alarm goes off, please wrap up so we can move on to the next speaker. Did I miss anything? Nope? Okay. So we'll go in order that the public comment request forms were submitted. So first is Randy Sterner.
I'm just going to start the 30 minutes on my phone, just in case you end up...
Okay, perfect. Any speaking from there, up here at the podium, wherever you're most comfortable, sir.
I'll wait until the first speaker's ready. Take your time.
I'd be tempted to challenge the fax machine that she talked about. It's handy for us old timers. Like I say, obviously, I'm a grandpa, a Christian. When I was at school, National Geographic was about the... While its magazine was available to us at school. You guys probably already know what it is. And I don't feel that beginning readers need to be exposed to sexual porn for young kids, beginning, the reading career and stuff like that. I just don't think, I don't think it plays a role anywhere, really, but especially for beginning readers. And even adults that won't be involved in that, I don't think they're quite normal. There are things somewhere, you don't have a Christian belief, you must not be involved in a church. It's just not the normal human life. We're getting pretty, pretty tore off from what the Lord wants us to do. So that's about what I want to say. I say thank you and may the Lord bless all of you.
Thank you. Thank you, Randy.
Any comments or questions for Randy?
You referred to National Geographic. My parents had a subscription and it's something we shared as a family and read and looked through as a family. From my earliest memories, it was always part of our family life. It did introduce, I'm 66 years old, so I was in the 50s, so it was, you know, fairly conservative time. And National Geographic offered a lot of information about a lot of cultures, a lot of different clothing styles, a lot of different lifestyles, a lot of different challenges. We talked about that as a family. And I think that's just something to keep in mind with what is actually offered or not offered to view it maybe somewhat in light of the National Geographic.
It was in the school library and that was like the first exposure to female.
Well, I mean, TV nowadays and everything, I mean, you walk outside to McDonald's.
I got knocked out a lot. We don't train right course now.
Right.
Where we have no morals and...
But see, my parents, we, you know, they instilled morals. We had those discussions in our community and my church growing up and everything.
I hope to see you and your kids and your grandkids too.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it is. But, you know, I was just thinking of an example such as National Geographic as being a really good point to point out and to have conversations in. So I just appreciate you bringing that up.
No, exactly. But that was just one source.
Yeah.
When I was a teen in high school, that was probably my first exposure to some of the community.
Well, I just, there are so many diverse subjects. But thank you for bringing that up as a neat foundation for education.
Thank you, Randy. Next is, if I'm pronouncing it right, Eileen?
Yes.
Or Eilina?
Eilina.
Eilina. I was going to get it wrong. I know me, I was going to get it wrong.
Matthews.
Okay. So first, I just wanted to say I felt like throwing up all day. I am not a public speaker, so this makes me really sick, I'm sorry. So I'm a very private person. This is not my element to speak in front of a group like this. But I'm honestly embarrassed that it's taken me so long to speak with you guys. Over the last several years, I've been noticing things and I've just, I've been a peacekeeper, so I've tried to stay quiet. To backtrack a little bit, I've lived in Christian County for over 14 years and our library has been a huge blessing to our family as my children have grown up with this community resource. After the library bond issue passed a few years ago, I began to notice LGBT books in the library, but more specifically in the children's section of the library. I was concerned that my children would stumble across something that would confuse or upset them. So I called and spoke with the branch manager at the time, who reassured me that this was totally fine and normal and that all the citizens in the county need to be able to check out material of their interest in the public library. So I just became more careful with what my children checked out, attempting to monitor everything that came home of us. Fast forward to this week. So I've seen a lot of concerning books over the last few years, but a friend of mine this week showed me that our library has literal pornography in the children's book section. I did my own research on Cool Cast to see for myself and I just found title after title after title of books that promote, I'm sorry, that promote sexual content and transgender ideology in the children's section. Search subjects included gender transition hormone therapy, gender reassignment surgery for children. Sexual content has no place in the children's section, not like that. I was so shaken by what I saw that I honestly, I can't in good conscience bring my children back at this point until something changes. This is heartbreaking because we have made friends with the employees of the library. They've been a part of my life watching my children grow. Like I said, 14 years I've been there. I've mentioned my hopes to introduce the book reading system at the Christian County Library to the employees or maybe even see that the LGBT children's books are put in a separate section altogether. But I honestly, after what I've seen, I don't even know if that's enough to change my mind at this point. I did read Renee's response to the proposal and all I see is just an unwillingness to help. I'm really struggling to understand what has changed over the last few years. This is, this is new. These books didn't just magically appear, they were purchased. So who makes these decisions? I found in the library policy manual that the library's material selection committee makes purchasing decisions, but the ultimate decision is made by the directors of collection services and youth services. There is a process to request removal of these books, but if the committee continues to purchase similar books, then what's the point? I'm not an advocate of book banning and censorship, but why bring these books into the children's section at all when so many parents are upset about them? If the books are requested by patrons, then why not place them in a separate section like the religious books are treated? I think everyone would be happy if their books were easier to find that way anyway. But I'm here to ask, please don't try to give up in finding a solution. We want your help and I'm not here for book banning or censorship. I'm here to advocate for protecting the innocence of children in the spirit of compromise.
Thank you. All right. Next is Juanetta.
Juanetta.
And you'll have to excuse me, that's my daughter, Ms. Eilina, and I've got stuff scrolled because I didn't know if I was even going to be able to make it, so...
Before you begin, I don't think the, did you, the dinger on the timer wasn't working?
I don't know, it's my computer issue, it's not working.
So if one of us says something, it's not, not to be rude, just because that...
I tried to just turn it on and off, so it may work this time.
Thanks, sir. That's okay, I'm not easily offended.
No, I'm sorry, yes, so go ahead.
As she said, I am, I am her mom. And again, if I can read my scrolling, I will. As a grandmother of five grandchildren and a taxpayer in Christian County, I'm going to come at this at a different angle. I have been extremely concerned about the unrated books, which have been appearing over the last few years in both the teen and the children's sections of the library. And keep in mind, I'm a kid of the 60s and 70s. I'm as libertarian as any of them. And as a matter of fact, I worked in a public library. The librarian, the head librarian, was my absolute hero. I loved her. She had her own rating system, which was awesome. People could come in if there were things that she thought the general taxpayer and paying public would not be okay with. They were placed in a special section, everybody was happy. My husband and I, let's see, my husband and I pay a lot of taxes just like others do in Christian County to support the library. The estimate that I've heard is $3 million plus for each branch. And yet I have to watch her, I have to watch my daughter, who is diligently sacrificing, her and her husband are working to provide a quality education for her children. She homeschools, she's amazing. And now she can't even feel safe and confident that the books in the children's section will be appropriate and displayed professionally for the taxpaying public of Christian County to use. Appropriate and professional. You can't just have things out for little kids. I very much resonated with what Randy said. And let's make this clear, I saw National Geographic too. It was in Odina's library. But there's a difference between cultures, who that's the way they live, they know no other way, and the gradual moving toward telling children that they should change their gender. There's a difference there. I'm just going to say that, okay? To me, that's unacceptable. At the very least, a rating system needs to be implemented. Citizens of Christian County who pay for the buildings, who pay to keep the lights on, who pay salaries deserve at least, at the very least that. And like I said, I'm a kid of the 60s and 70s. I'm absolutely not a book burner. I'm not somebody that thinks that you should ban everything. I think everything needs to be appropriate and it needs to be representative of the public that pays all these taxes. And we pay twice, we have a business and we pay personally. So I find it offensive. And I get tired of being characterized as somebody who's a bad person because I feel like those dollars need to be reflecting the needs and the will of the taxpaying public. And I appreciate very much that you all are willing to listen to the other sides. So thank you very much. Did you guys have any questions for me? That was really it. Like I said, I scrolled really good because I'm, plus I'm 63 and I can't see very well.
Any questions for Juanetta?
No.
Thank you, Juanetta.
Thank you. You bet.
All right. Next is Reggie Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone. My main concern tonight, I had a phone call of a lady that walked in the library at Sparta and there was a display in the children's section entitled "Family Love." And I went up there, I've got the pictures. Matter of fact, most of the books are displayed here. There are in three out of the four. It's not clever, I don't know why. Whose idea was this? Can anybody answer that? Did it come down from the American Library Association? Was it someone's idea here? Did you vote on this display?
I mean, any kind of procedural questions for the library or generally directed to the Executive Director? We as a library board do not dictate this place.
Renee, can you answer that?
I can, I'm happy to have a conversation with you.
Just very quickly, was it here or did it come down from the American Library?
It did not come from the American Library.
Okay. Some of these books, they had family love. And the display, again, was set up in the children's section. Really not one of these books are about the traditional family. Some of the books was called "The Queer Bible." One was called "Real Queer America," Uncle Bobby's Wedding, Heather Has Two Mommies. I looked up the word queer in the dictionary. Anybody ever looked that up? You know what it even means?
We run out of time.
No response? It means strange or odd? Don't you think that our families in America have enough trouble without something strange and odd being set out before them? I want to close with this. I've got a friend, a minister friend, his name is Fitz Porter. He has a ministry in prisons. He travels 30, 32 prisons all over the United States. In the last four or five years, he's had over between 32,000 to 35,000 inmates given their life to Christ. And he told me, he said, Reggie, one of the biggest problems we have, a lot of these men that come to the Lord, he said, they struggle with whether or not God can forgive them of men that's lived this type of lifestyle in prison. Because the Bible says, if any man is in Christ, he's a new creature. Those old things pass away and behold, all things become new. And he said that he would be willing to come and share with you what he has seen and what he faces with these men. He nicked more than three minutes. I told him I would bring it up, say, possibly you might be able to give him 10 minutes time. But again, he travels all over the United States and he's willing to come and speak with you.
Thank you, Reggie.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Deborah Spindel.
Good job. That's not her name.
I got Deborah down.
I'm not a public speaker either, so forgive me if I'm a little nervous. I'm recent, recently moved to the NIXA area. I'm a mother of five, all of whom are in the NIXA school districts currently, although I may be considering that. So I just wanted to thank you for allowing me to speak today, but I do want to make a note that changing the public comment to this portion of the meeting, it's disappointing on your behalf. You shouldn't have been allowed to comment about the policy changes. But anyway, I just wanted to talk about some of the things that the two sides might agree on. And I found some statistics. One is that suicide is the second leading cause of death among youth ages 10 to 24. And those who identify as part of the LGBTQ plus community are more than four times more likely to commit suicide or to have suicide. So I think we can all agree, and the reason we're all here so passionately speaking today is that we all feel that the youth of this nation, this country, this community are at risk. And I'm passionately calling for the library board to empower parents to help their children in the way that they see fit, to put boundaries on the materials in the library so that parents can choose what their children are exposed to. So, okay. And then, you know, regardless of political, any doctrine, dogma, ideology, political leanings, no one has the entitlement to influence our children in any particular way. That's the parent's decision. The blame game has also been batted back and forth at these meetings on whose fault it is, on whether children are exposed to these materials, whether it's the library or the parents. I would argue that it's both. And we need the library's help to, especially in this day and age of the internet, to help us make sure that our children are not exposed to this kind of material against our wishes. And then my third point is that, and perhaps the solution, is that there be a designated area for this type of material. I'm not arguing for a book ban or censorship in any way. I'm arguing for a safe space, if you will, that parents who want their children to have this type, access to this type of material, they're able to do that. And then parents who choose not to aren't having to sift through the plethora of books in the library, hoping that their children don't stumble upon something that will traumatize them. So perhaps that could be done via permission slips or when you join the library, you can click a button. Yes, that's fine if my kids do that or no, it's not. But we need the library's help. We need the library and parents to join together and do this as a team instead of arguing and fighting.
For the record, I moved into the beginning of the meeting because I wanted to hear, we wanted to hear everybody's comments regarding this topic before we moved into the discussion of it. So I wanted to make sure everyone got to speak about the rating system and the topic before we actually got to discuss it. So that was the reason why I moved in. Next is John Garrity.
Before I speak, I'd like to say that's my daughter. Very proud of her. I had a big, long thing prepared, but I've had the privilege of speaking with Renee. My wife has had the privilege of speaking with Stephanie. So they've heard everything that we want to say. I want to talk about it personally because like some of the previous speakers, what a library meant to me growing, what a library meant to me growing up. As a young kid in grade school, me and my buddies would get on our bike, we'd go to the library. Parents didn't have to supervise us. We could get books, we could learn about World War II and all the stuff that, learn about airplanes and stuff that are important to kids. We didn't have to worry about opening a book about a boy, it can be a girl or a girl could be a boy. Things were simpler in those days and we didn't have to. We didn't have to worry about politics and gender ideologies and things like that. I have five grandkids in this area and I don't want to have to worry that if they're in the children's section and they're all little kids, that I have to worry about the books that are peppered in there. Every, you know, every 10th or 15th or, we don't even know. I've seen photos of where they are not even, seems like they're not even following the Dewey Decimal System, they're just kind of like randomly put in there. I don't know how we're doing that, but to piggyback on what my daughter said, if we can put books that have gender ideology and my heart goes out to a child who's confused about their identity. They're troubled. They need help, they need attention, and their parents should be involved in it. They shouldn't be trying to figure it out themselves because my daughter, you know, I'm going to say something about, she was a tomboy. But I didn't put her in boys' clothing and I didn't get blockers and I didn't recommend surgery and I didn't affirm that she was going to be a boy. I let her grow into herself and let her decide when she was old enough to decide instead of trying to affirm something that is biologically not possible and doesn't require mutilation and chemicals. And that's what we're selling here, guys. We're selling a lie and it needs to be put somewhere else. That's all I've got. Any questions?
Oh, I was going to say about the random placements. In a library, a lot of kids, you know, if it's in the children's section, they will take a book and instead of putting it up on top to be re-shelled, very often they'll stick it in there. I've seen it myself. And there's no Dewey Decimal for it.
I don't deny that. And, you know, honestly, with all of the intelligent people here, I implore, in fact, I asked Renee, I know you're asking your lawyer, what is legal? We ask what's moral. We ask, what can you do to help us? Not what's legal to do or not do, what can you do? This is your charge. We'll do ours, but this is your charge, not mine.
Good. All right. Sherry Leonard.
Like the other ones, I have done a lot of public speaking. I'm a former Mrs. Missouri and I have stood in front of lots of people and I've seen lots of things in my 45 years of being a nurse. I've done a little bit of trauma and I've seen what things can do to children. I'm more concerned that if you're going to put this stuff out there for them to read and for them to think they're learning, then you need to put out the information for them to learn of what happens to their bodies after they have done this transition. The infection rate is tremendous. The suicide rate is horrifying, just horrifying. The instruments that we have to use to transition a patient from one body to the next body is all a practice. There is not a physician on the face of the earth that is going to be able to promise you an exact science. Every physician has practicing medicine listed under their name. They are schooled to do what they can do. There's not one that can guarantee you a full outcome. I was just reading the information on a young woman that went from being a beautiful female to a male messed up mess. They took tissue and used it to implement her male organs and ended up with tissue that went inside of her body that had hair follicles in it. Now she's damaged for the rest of her life and has infection that will irritate her forever and ever. She has a permanent fixture in her body called a vascular access device that she receives antibiotics on. At one point or another, there will be a time when she will become unable to receive any antibiotics and will die from this transition that someone told her or thought. or thought that was because I want to be a little boy. It's okay. It's not okay. It's not okay. We're killing.
Summer reading challenges, so I asked Dana to give an update on that and a little bit of preview of how summer reading challenge is going. Hi, guys. Good to see you guys. My name's Dana Roberts. I'm the Director of Youth Services. And I'm in charge of designing all of our reading challenges that we do here at the library. And as of this year, we have implemented four seasonal reading challenges, instead of only offering them in winter and summer, to encourage reading all year round to the entire family. So what we did this spring was our Spring Intermountain Reading Challenge. We have offered this positively on Beanstack in the years past, but this is the first year now we offer it for two months, and we offered prizes for patrons who read over the course of March and April. So we, wait. Oh, go back, go back. So we offered our seasonal, we're offering our seasonal reading challenges for two months each now, instead of kind of differing times for every single one. So for this year, for spring, it was March and April. It's minute-based logging through our Beanstack app. So we log through there, or we have paper forms. We had baskets of prizes for some of the items. The items for the prizes were baskets of themed items. And we were able to, you're able to put a ticket into a basket after you've read for one hour. So this is some statistics from spring. We had 400 registered readers. This was about a 280% increase from how many people were registered last year, just for our passive reading challenge on Beanstack. So an amazing increase. We had 83 book reviews written, 238 activities completed, and we had a little, over 250,000 minutes logged. Last year for March and April on Beanstack, we had about 67,000 minutes logged. So again, about 280% increase in just the minutes logged, which is amazing. Here were our prizes. Spring Intermountain Reading is designed to promote our seed library, where patrons can come in and check out seeds and get information about gardening. So we had an outdoor gardening set that was geared more for adults. It had an adult-sized kneeler slash brace for anyone working out in the garden, which I started this year, and it's definitely going to be handy. It has some tools, as well as a gathering kit. We had a hydroplas growing system for any of our patrons who don't have access to outdoor space, if you want to grow indoors. And we have a kids' gardening set, which had some more toy gardening items that they could help adults with outside, but they were plastic and they were designed more for playing. And then we have a flower pressing kit for anyone who is more artistic that wanted to do that. And the numbers below the pictures have how many tickets were entered into each. You can see that our outdoor gardening tools was the most popular of all the sets. I'm very happy with how many tickets were entered in these prizes this year, and that just tells me that next spring we'll offer more similar prizes. And one of our activities on Beanstack was for patrons to check out some seeds from our seed library. And the question was, what seeds did you, not purchase, I guess, check out. You check out the seeds, you don't buy them. And you put in what kind of seed, and this is a word cloud of all the different kinds of items that were checked out. It does not reflect how many were actually checked out, just those who participate in the spring challenge. So we can see flowers, peppers, and tomatoes were the most popular. If I had taken out every single mention of a flower, like Carnival, or the Black Eyed Susans, or any of those, there would have just been a big word, "flower." So I kept all the little words in there so you could see what was actually people were interacting with. So that's our spring challenge. And now I'm just going to give a quick update on how summer reading is going. Our theme is all together now. Next slide, please. Summer reading is now from June to July. That is eight and a half weeks about this year. It will average eight weeks every single year, just like our other reading challenge as well. So far, we have about 621,000 minutes read. We have almost 6,000 activities completed and almost 250 reviews written. And a comparison from last year for how many, oh, sorry, next slide. My apologies. This is how many we have registered at the moment, how many people are interacting with summer reading. You know, we have 148 babies and toddlers registered, and that's about halfway to the total registration from last year for babies and toddlers. And we're only 20 days in. So that's a great, great news for me. 649 kids and tweens, again, it's about halfway from where we were last year. And the same for the teens. How for the adults? We're already almost at our goal from last year. Last year for summer, we had about 560 adults register, and we're almost already there, which I'm really excited to hear. The whole point of having these reading challenges is to encourage the whole family to read together. We really offer prizes for adults too, so that we can get that mirroring effect whenever adults are reading with their kids. It encourages the kids to read if they see the adults reading. So I'm really happy with that. And then we have 38 staff attending our staff's summer reading challenge. And here are some pictures from some of the events that we have going on. Will Stuck is an entertainer slash comedian slash artist. He told some fun stories, did some science experiments, and the kids were just having a great time. The next slide has the 417 princesses who came to visit to do a meet and greet. If any, the kids could come and take a picture, meet the princess, talk with her for a few minutes. Rapunzel was amazing. Mirabelle was great. But of course, you have to have Belle in the library, right? That's just a requirement. And next slide. Then we had the Nixa Fire Protection District visit us last week, where kids learned about fire safety, the importance of having a safe meeting space if your home is on fire, were to meet outside. A couple of parents got some homework to do that night. I was talking about fire safety with their kids. And then we had some of them, sorry, can you go back one more time? This is Ms. Jerry. She's the firefighter who got into her full gear, and she was crawling around the floor to give the kids a chance to kind of see or hear what it would sound like if a firefighter was in their house. Because to kids who've never seen that, it can kind of seem like a monster is coming to get them. So just that she was crawling around. They got to kind of touch her helmet and her shoulders, see what it was like. And then we also got some hats, next slide, for the staff members. So some staff members got to be junior firefighters as well. And they got to put some hats on.
Brandon, I'm disappointed you didn't wear it for the meeting.
Oh. And of course, next slide, we have many more events coming up this summer. That's including the Diggers and Park Chews coming with many opportunities to see animals and learn about conservation. Mike and Nancy are musicians that are going to come next week to Clever and Ozark. Tommy Terrific and Marty Hahn are magicians. Mike Anderson is another musician. The James River Basin Partnership will be teaching us about the watershed and about conserving water in our community. The Christian County Ambulance District is going to be coming here as well to go get bike helmets and sparta. So we have lots of fun stuff this summer. Any questions for me?
Can you be perkier?
I can try.
Any other comments or questions for Dana?
Thank you for providing my thanks.
All right. Moving on to old business, talking about the rating system that we started discussing last month. And real quick, before I kind of open the floor, Renee, was there any additional information or anything post-report that you wanted to add for today's meeting? All right, well, as far as the board goes, I'll kind of open up the floor for discussions on the rating systems. If you had any topics specifically you want to talk about in regards to it, or any comments in regards to the commentary.
With rating systems, I think Renee has ricked it up quite clearly that we don't have the money to fight lawsuits. And we live in a community that has diverse backgrounds, beliefs, and experiences. And we must provide access to library services and materials to everyone. That doesn't mean that you will want your child to have them or your preteen, but it does mean that some parents will choose to have their children have those items. And I don't, you know, another speaker earlier, you know, like several months ago, said about the same thing that Deborah did about by doing the rating system and putting boundaries in the library, that so parents can have, so children can have more freedom, basically, and so parents can choose for their children. I think that's what Deborah said, so parents can choose for their children. Well, you can choose for your children without having LGBTQ section. You can still, and you know, there are LGBTQ people in this world. And by, you know, and you can choose in your family to not speak of them and to not deal with them and not have your children read books about them. But there are families who want their children to have access to that information. So they, you know, and where else would they get that? And it's best to get it from, you know, the books that are written on that subject. And I think the thing is, libraries are not the enemy. Books are not the enemy. We have a First Amendment in our country. And here, I got this from congress.gov. It says, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof," which I'm sure a lot of you guys, a lot of you are from churches, and you would not want anyone coming to your church and say, "You cannot have a discussion on this," or "You cannot tell your parishioners that." You wouldn't appreciate that at all. Because the people who are coming to your church are wanting to hear their message, not somebody else's. Correct? So anyway, and, "or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." Okay, freedom of speech and of the press, considered so important, they are in the First Amendment along with freedom of religion. From this comes the principle of intellectual freedom. This is the right of every individual to both seek and receive information from all points of view without restrictions. Libraries are based on this principle. With the freedom of speech and press comes responsibility, as does with parenting. I have every confidence in the citizens of Christian County to show responsibility in monitoring what their children check out at the library. Parents do not need my help or guidance in their decisions, and they do not need yours either. Thank you.
Can I comment on that?
We have the public comment policy within the meeting. We don't, in the meeting, don't do an open, open forum discussion.
May I have a question, please?
Toward me?
Towards the moderator of the meeting. Is this a time for the board to discuss old business or to preach to the audience? I thought it was a time for the board to discuss amongst themselves.
I mean, it is. Because I feel like we're being preached that.
I wish I filled out that paperwork. I wanted to speak.
It is, it is the time for us to discuss the rating system as a board, as we don't discuss it outside of the meeting, obviously, so we don't have a walking board.
But then why are we reading something to us that we all know? Freedom of speech.
I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to ask to make sure so the discussion continues as it should.
I mean, it's a time for us to discuss, and Paula had some points in regards to her reasoning by, or as she may vote or she may decide upon later. This is kind of an open discussion for anything that we want to say in this particular time. So in regards to the rating system.
Can you address us directly?
Yeah.
Can you address us directly?
I don't want to, I don't want to mess the meeting up anymore, but if this is what this discussion is, then I'd really encourage to continue the board to talk amongst themselves. Thank you.
Paula, may I say something? Just, it's not, no, I'm not.
I'm happy to go next, to move us along. So I don't want, as a board, for us to be distracted by anything other than what we're here to discuss, which is the rating system itself. And I come from a conservative household. I think we have a fairly conservative household. We monitor what my kids read and what our kids watch. And, you know, when we are watching movies, the rating system is extremely helpful. It is something that we guide what our children are allowed to watch. But the publishing industry has not provided a similar rating system for us to take advantage of. And it is part of our responsibility to ensure that we are, that taxpayer funds are being utilized appropriately. And implementing a rating system that is not fully developed is not a good use of taxpayer funds. I do think that, you know, as a board, we have outlined a process to report books that might be inappropriately catalogued or which may be inappropriate for the library. And oftentimes, you know, when we have taken public comment, we have found that that process is not being followed. That's not to say that's exclusive, but there are oftentimes where that process is not being followed. And so I think we must continue to press upon, you know, the processes that we have in place. And I just don't think at this time that the rating systems that have been put before us are a good use of taxpayer dollars.
I'll go. First of all, I just want to thank you, Renee, for the research and time that you put into the library's response. I know you didn't take it lightly, and as any good librarian would, your research surveyed and looked at statistics to make sure that no stone was left unturned. So I appreciate that work from you. So like Stephanie talked about the, when you talked about the movie rating system, we also look at the movie rating system, but we also don't take that, in my household, as like an end-all, be-all. This is, this is it. I use Common Sense Media and other avenues to see, you know, if my 10 and 8-year-old can watch the specific movie, whatever the rating is. Also, I know what my kids can handle. I have a kid that can handle scary movies, and I have a kid that can't handle scary movies. So that, you know, plays a part. So coming back to books, as you said, Stephanie, we have no MPAA for books. The numbers that Renee shared were staggering, 500,000 to 1 million books per year published. Even if we were to take that and narrow it down to our physical collection in Christian County, all of the Mobius books, plus Hoopla and Libby, there just aren't enough hours in the day or funds in the copper to cover the cost, I think, of what would be in front of us. I think one of our options is to heavily, and Renee, and you started doing this, and I know Matthew at some meetings you've started doing this, having the library highlight other systems. The same way that people preview movies or read reviews, the best way to make, is the best way to make sure that information's out there. Give readers and parents the tools they need to decide for themselves. Goodreads, Book Luxe, Novelist, of course, Common Sense Media. As parents, let's research books in a catalog online with our kids before they hit the library, make a list of books they love, and ask the librarians to help find similar ones. You know, I have a 10-year-old who reads above his grade level, and I have to be careful about finding seventh-grade books that are going to be appropriate for him, or what I feel are appropriate for him. And sometimes that means asking the librarian, because I know that they're going to know. Writing reviews on, you know, and I think we need to empower our patrons to write reviews on books, on Coolcat, and be on there and request if there's keywords that aren't on there that they think should be, to request those keywords. Sharing the books that your kids love and that you love, rather than, you know, feeling shame for letting kids read books you may not agree with. And I always go back to, at the end of the day, and this was a big part of my thought process for us tonight, was, you know, Dr. Reading and Sims Bishop, books can be windows, mirrors, or sliding glass doors. And I, as a parent, want a society, I want a society of empathetic readers, once you see themselves reflected in the books they read, learn about others, and better understand who are different, those who are different. Allowing my kids to escape the world sometimes and go through those sliding glass doors into a whole different world is what they need. And so I don't ever want them to have, feel shame. And I feel like, you know, the embarrassment of checking out a book and maybe having a number on it that's higher or lower than another, their friend may be allowed to check out, could, I would hate for that to be a reason that that friend or my child feels embarrassed about what they're reading. So that's my thoughts. So, that's my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, Allison. Janice, I was put you on the spot before, I wanted to know if you wanted any comments.
I had not prepared comments. I'm personally a bit, just, just as, as my emotional person, disturbed that when people have expressed their opinion here, that you are, we are trying to listen and be receptive and process the information. That is our job. It is not an instant process. It does take time. The library system was established hundreds of years ago in the United States.
Again, I ask, is this a time for the board to discuss amongst themselves, or are they preaching to the audience? I'm just asking.
Am I not allowed to respond as you, as we let you respond?
He says you weren't supposed to. He said this was a discussion among yourselves.
And I'm listening to, I'm not listening to what Janice is saying about any of this, so.
I, I feel this is a bit lopsided here. We are trying to be very thorough. We are trying to listen. We are empathetic. We do understand your concerns. It is not an instant process. This is a big system. It involves more than just the four branches of the Christian County Library or this specific community. And my opinion is that you, I, I would hope that you would all grace us with our education and our experience and our time to research, and not be rash in decisions, in your opinion, pro or con. We are trying to be very thorough.
Thank you, Janice. All right. So, obviously, we've been discussing this, or have had comments in regards to a rating system over the course of the last six or seven months. And we've seen quite a few different perspectives on the rating system. We've, I think we've been given two or three versions of a rating system. And then even then, within the commentary, there's variation. Some commentators would like a rating system. Some would like a designated area or designated space for certain type of books. You know, some, some commentators have been very specific that they don't want books banned, and, and one of the speakers had been to comment that certain books should be banned from the library. And so, again, I'll echo Allison's comments, Renee, about all of the research that you've done in regards to this. I know it was no easy task. And for me, as I kind of look, look at the research, look at some, a couple of the rating systems that have been provided, such as BookLooks and, and their potential implementation, I keep coming back to one fundamental, fundamental issue. And, and the word that's been used by a majority of the commentators is implement a rating system. And I have one kind of hang-up on that, and that's that we would not be implementing a rating system. We would be creating a rating system. As Renee's kind of research dictates, and I know all of us have done some digging into this on our own, there is, nor has there been brought before the board any example of a public library system anywhere in the United States that has implemented a similar rating system, such as BookLooks or any kind of variation of that. And so it would, and as you mentioned some of the numbers, but we have 70,000 physical books within our collection, 28,000 of which are children's and young adults. And we have, from an inflow-outflow perspective, in 2022, as Renee's report dictated, we had 6,000 new physical titles come into the library, and then we retired about 3,000 of them. And so there is no rating system that would allow us to simply turn it on or simply go down the list of our 28,000, just within the children's and teen section, or the 70,000 of our total collection, and just go out and start labeling based on the list.
Yes, there is. When children reach the age of 10, I'm leaving. This is crap.
Sir, this is not a public comment-
We're talking about our kids' lives.
Sir, this is not a public comment section.
I gotta go, hon. I'm a Christian man, I can't do this crap.
So, as I was saying, there, it would be the creation of a rating system. And from a purely man-hours standpoint, something that's not within the capacity of the current existing staff within the library, nor within the budget for us to hire the needed staff, to go through the tens of thousands of materials, read those materials. And as, as Renee pointed out, it would not be just one or two individuals. Each individual piece of the collection would need probably at least three individuals to review it, to come to a consensus of the zero-to-five rating system, if that's the one we were looking at. And so just the hours involved is a logistical impossibility, as far as that is concerned, as far as I'm concerned with that. The other kind of point for that in regards is that, as Allison pointed out, is there are alternatives currently in place. And I know Renee spent quite a bit of time, a couple of meetings ago, going over each of those. There was about half a dozen of them. Obviously, the most prominent one that is currently in place is, is Novelist, as far as its coverage. And it's, as a resource, a majority of our collection, I don't know the exact percentage, but of our physical collection is covered by Novelist. And we've all, I think, as individual board members, have looked at that. And for most of the titles that I've looked at, there are three, two to three ratings, or not ratings, two to three commentaries from individuals from Novelist talking about the details of that particular work. And then what theme it might fit under, what are some of the, the talking points, whether it be an LGBTQ-focused book or focused on a certain particular segment of society. So there are alternatives in place. And then kind of finally, the third-party resources, such as a BookLooks, are still available for any patron to use. And so it's not a limiting of that. I mean, we have computer access in all of our branches for anyone to, to look up, and look up that information as they are looking with their, with their children. And, and so all of these are available. But for me, as I kind of look, look at the research and, and look at kind of the numbers and the budget, not to mention the 13 million through Mobius or the 1.4 million through, through Libby, it's, I just land on the fact that it is a physical or logistical impossibility for the library staff in its current form and current budget to create a rating system that, that does not exist anywhere else. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Matt, shouldn't we, you gave us three minutes, and you can ask us questions. Shouldn't we, as taxpayer citizens, be able to ask you questions?
Again, that's what the public comment section of the meeting is for, is to address the board. At no point have we ever done a question-and-answer session within the board, within the board meeting. So, okay. So we've discussed that. And I think as a, as a board, as kind of a, a general consensus, this was specifically given a topic of this nature, we should probably put it to a motion and then a vote as far as a response from the board. So, if anyone would like to make a motion.
I would like to make, may I make a comment?
Sure, absolutely.
I've been using the libraries in Christian County for years. I have many nieces and nephews who are responsible for what they read. And some of these BookList, and now currently with my great nieces and nephews, have been very helpful to me in finding appropriate material, because I'm not connected with the school system right now. But these, these rating systems that I've been able to access on the computer have helped us make very good choices. And I'm grateful that you gave me a more thorough list than what I had before to help me when we make choices. And I, I appreciate that.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I will make the motion to accept the content-based rating system analysis provided by Renee.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
We'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Bishop?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Trustee Sisinski?
Aye.
Trustee Tuck, Trustee Tuckness?
Aye.
All right. Recommendation on the content-based rating system from Renee is approved. Moving on to new business, policy updates.
To make sure that we are-
Renee, I can't quite hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've got four policies. These are all related to the Secretary of State's administrative rule. I've mentioned it before, that we just needed a few tweaks to make sure that we are in compliance by the end of July is actually the deadline. So this will give us a little bit of time to make sure we get these updated and in place. So the first one is the material selection policy. This, the recommended updates, and these are based upon information from the Committee of the Missouri Public Libraries Directors Organization. They had committees that got together to provide some recommendations to libraries across the state and were vetted by an attorney. So the addition, there's an addition of how items are placed in the library to help comply with, just clarify that we're complying with the administrative rule. So this defines how we place materials, that we use, generally the publisher's grade and age, reading recommendations, and how, what ages of the different areas of the library, and how they're defined. So the children's area contains materials that are recommended for birth to age 11 or birth to grade 6. Teen areas are age 12 to 17 or grade 7 to 12. And then other areas are intended by use, for use by all ages and contain materials recommended for age 18 and up. And then the how you can have a say section of that policy. The main edit there is the administrative, the administrative rule requires our request for reconsideration form include a way for patrons to express concerns about not just items, which we already had in place, but also events, displays, or presentations. So that language is updated there. And we're updating the, the form to include those options as well. Do you want me to do, go through all four policies at once, or one at a time?
We got to vote on them individually?
Probably, yeah.
Probably. All right. We'll tackle that, tackle one at a time. All right. So any comments or questions from the board in regards to the changes to the material selection policy?
No, no questions.
Okay. If nobody has any questions or disagreements, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the material selection policy.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on this motion? All right. We'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Bishop? I'm sorry, Paula, were you gonna say?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
No, for once.
All right. Trustee Bishop, Trustee Hagan? Trustee Sisinski?
Aye.
Trustee Tuckness?
Aye.
All right. Policy one made, material selection policy changes have been approved. Go ahead, Renee.
The second one is the censorship policy. The only change here is to mirror, it mentions the request for reconsideration. So it just mirrors the same language that people can express concerns about item, event, display, or presentation. So, and, and the administrative rule also requires that we post the results of those reconsiderations online for, once submitted by parents who have minors as residents in the county. So we'll be doing that as well with the personal information redacted, which is included on the form itself.
I'm sorry, it's really hard to hear, huh?
I apologize. Sorry, I'm losing my voice a little bit. The administrative rule requires that we post online the results of requests for reconsideration by parents of minors who live in the county. So that, the, the form includes that information.
So the, the request for reconsideration form, has it been also updated? Or does it, has it always included that information?
It has not included the information, because we never posted it online. So we've just included that information so that they're aware it could be posted online with personal information redacted.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Which is like a state requirement now.
Yes, correct.
Any other questions regarding the censorship policy? I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the censorship policy.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this motion? All right. Do a roll call vote. Trustee Bishop?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Trustee Sisinski?
Aye.
Trustee Tuckness?
Aye.
All right. Motion is approved. Meeting is studied.
So the rule requires that any events taking place at the library must have any promotional materials for that have to include an age designation. So we already do that with library events. But for organizations or individuals that are using library meeting rooms, that is an event taking place in the library. So we're updating, I'm recommending updating the meeting room policy to include a statement letting people who are reserving organization or individuals to have age-appropriate designations affixed to any publication website or advertisement for events or presentation as outlined by the administrative rule. So that is the only change there.
Does the library have a responsibility to ensure that that occurs?
We've had a lot of discussion about that, but there's not really any guidance from the state library about it. But we will treat it like we do any other violation of policy. Sometimes it's just education, sometimes it's monitoring. It may be a matter of if it's a repeat offense that we say you can't use the, the library meeting room, or something like that.
All right. Any other questions or concerns regarding the meeting room policy? I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting room policy changes.
All right. Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion? All right. So a roll call vote. Trustee Bishop?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Trustee Sisinski?
Aye.
Trustee Tuckness?
Aye.
All right. This motion is approved. Unattended child policy.
And this was not actually directly related to the administrative rule, but as we were reviewing policies, we, actually a staff member a few months ago had brought this to my attention, that they thought it could be some clarification. The statement about children of any age with mental, physical, or emotional problems who require supervision should be accompanied by a parent or caregiver at all times. The, the description of the, the problems is a little problematic in and of itself. So basically, we just clarified that and simplified it to say children of any age who require supervision, for whatever reason, should be accompanied by a parent or caregiver at all times. So that is the main, the only change for that particular policy.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding the unattended child, children policy?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
We did have a question two or three months ago, or some comments two or three months ago about the age, the ages that were provided. What guidance was used? I legitimately don't know what guidance was used to kind of outline the age of nine, where if children are left alone and under the age of nine, a parent or guardian will be called to pick them up, or under the age of 17.
So in Missouri, to my knowledge, and from my experience at public libraries, there's not like an age that it's okay for children to be, it's not defined, like legally. But the children's division have, they have a statement that basically any reports of an unattended child under the age of eight or nine, I believe, they will investigate within three hours. So that's kind of the guiding principle. That seems to be an age that the state considers could be a thing across the state. This is pretty in line with what most public libraries do. It's usually like the eight to 10 kind of age range, from my knowledge. And there's been a lot of discussion about it in public libraries recently. So that's, it's standard practice is the best answer I've got.
Any other questions regarding the unattended children policy? All right. I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve that changes.
Okay. Have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any other further discussion on this motion? Nope. All right. We'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Bishop?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Trustee Sisinski?
Aye.
Trustee Tuckness?
Aye.
All right. That motion is approved. Any other questions or comments for the board, for Renee or staff? Any other questions or comments for the board, for Renee or staff? Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Since the meeting has adjourned, I just want to say something. Paul has said, sound good, there's no truth to it. Churches are not funded by tax. That's the reason why citizens have no right to come in and tell one-